Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Here.
Councillor Dilaba.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Rees.
Here.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Rees.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay.
It would be a lot worse. Oh, we had her last call before I got divorced.
Yeah.
You know. Worst case.
Well, that's okay. So all of this will go out there. So we're just agreeing that. Yeah.
The word right there. You stick up. There was a whole outside that's going to say that. I don't want to think that. I just don't want to be one. Do you want me to go video something? Okay. I'll make some paper here or I can make it wait for me. Andrew, I have two things in that room for that. I do. They've been sitting there for a year. Okay. Yes. Yeah. Make sure we weren't warm since.
Like the record reflect that upon returning from executive session, all members of council are still present. We have one presentation tonight regarding a ready, the ready update.
Thank you, Merritt. This evening, we have representatives from Ramble Engineering. We have Mike Manning and Steve Delano, who are gonna present to you an update on our two projects receiving ready funding. Everybody should have a hard copy from their agendas as well as the public, and it will also be on the screens. And it's available as a handout for anybody attending remotely. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that work? Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here. My name is Steve Delano with Ramble Engineers out of Syracuse. And with me here is Mike Manning. We're consulting engineers for the city on the two ready projects that are currently in progress. And wanted to give you an update on those, on those two projects. Got a pointer here, but I'm hesitant to use it. I'm worried that I might find somebody. So if I do, please stop me. Powerful. Let's see. First project is the Maple City Trail project that we're going to give you an overview of. That project is well underway. Then we're going to give you an overview of the Tavisky Center Municipal Marina in Morset Park Project, which relatively speaking has just started out. And update you on a significant issue that we've encountered recently would get related to the city dock bulkhead, where we think a change order is recommended. And then we want to open it up for questions and an open discussion. Let's see. Maple City Trail. Again, this one's the easy one. Construction started earlier this summer, June 2022. Contractor J E Sheehan out of Potsdam. Contract values about 2.6, $2.06 million. Work completed to date is pretty much the foundational work for the project, which includes primarily the precast concrete retaining wall, 1,300 feet of that. Probably seen that work if you've been out near the site. Rough grading of the site has been completed. Utilities have been in. Concrete pads and curbs have been installed, getting ready for the fun stuff, which is going to be done in the spring. That would be paving, planting, seeding, benches, like finishes like that. So you should see that stuff going in in the spring. Plan is to keep the trail closed during the winter to keep people, keep the public off the, off the construction site. And then wrap it up in the spring, completing in June. Project is on budget and there really have not been any significant issues. Contractors doing real good work. The project is in good shape.
It is. There are good drainage through the wall at different points. I know that that's part of the corrosion issue. Smaller part of the corrosion issue.
Are you talking the Maple City Trail?
Yeah.
Project. The, you know, the wall itself is, is not a solid wall. It's porous at the joints. Certainly, there are some existing storm drain pipes that are extended through the wall. Beyond that, there, there's no dedicated wall drainage.
Yeah.
Let's see. Next slide, Kathy, please. This here will be an overview of the, the second project, the Tavisky Center project. And again, I won't point here, so I'll just kind of talk generally from left to right. But just to refresh your memory on an overview of the project, it consists of shoreline rehabilitation. it consists of shoreline rehabilitation components aimed at supporting a number of park improvements, if you will, throughout the area. Riprap shoreline stabilization in the vicinity of the boat launch on the left-hand side of the project. Steel sheet piling along the riverside of the.
While you're talking about the riprap. Between the customs house and the boat launch. I looked at that today. I would assume those cavities in between the rocks are gonna be filled and everything. There must be smaller stones and rocks going in there.
I haven't looked at that, so I, so I'm not sure. I'd have to take a look at that.
Okay.
It is relatively large riprap. I think it is.
There's just big gaps, and it's like, it almost looks a bit dangerous. And it's not very inviting to get into the river, but I try my best.
I've heard complaints.
Yeah.
But I was saving it for question time.
You have heard complaints about that aspect of the work?
Yeah, I think people want to be able to get a little closer to the water, so maybe they were looking for some fill on top or something of that nature. So that, as Mr. Reese said, it's not so potential leg breaking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something somebody can walk on, you know what I mean?
If we could take a look at that, we can take a look at that.
I think like a smaller rock, like Mr. Reese was talking about, kind of fill it in.
Fill on the.
I don't, I don't think that would add a lot to the cost.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Can you take a look at that? Okay. Yeah, I think they maybe just started that work, so I'm not sure how far it's progressed. So I'd want to take a look, understand that before doing anything different, but we'll take a look at that for sure. Let's see. Steel sheet piling along the riverside of the municipal pier. I know some of you maybe call it the boardwalk. I guess for purposes of this, we're calling it the pier. Steel sheet piling would extend the length of that on the river and then wrap around the corner, wrap it on the end to tie into the existing sheet piling on the, on the Marina side. Some additional riprap on the, on the interior shoreline of the Marina. And then kind of on the right-hand side there, I do need to point to this, because it's gonna be. Doesn't, it doesn't work, does it? Yep, it's not gonna be very effective. The city dock is, is the portion to the right of the pier. And we're gonna talk about that here in a few, couple slides. But the purpose of that primarily is to raise, support raising of the grade within the park to allow construction of relocation of the playground and construction of pickleball courts and tennis courts and a future pavilion. Further to right on the end there is a stone sill and vegetated shoreline as well. So those, that's an overview of the primary components of the work. Just to give you a, give you a feel. Project status. Contract was awarded, or a notice to proceed was issued to the contractor in late September. Contractors TJ Fiacco out of Norwood, who you may or may not be familiar with, but they've done work with the city in the past. Contract value seven point five million dollars and change. Project completion is scheduled for the fall of twenty twenty-three, so year from now. Although several items of the work, some several significant items of the work are, are indicated to be completed by, by May of twenty twenty-three, the plan being to, to get those in service and available for use by the Memorial Day weekend, if at all possible. Contractors proceeding in earnest with those objectives in mind, trying to get some work in done before the winter. Unfortunately, we run into a significant issue at the, the city dock bulkhead, which is again, is that area on the, on the right-hand side there, that we want to give you an overview on. Let's see. So yeah, what we're calling the city dock bulkhead is the steel sheet piling wall that, that separates the river from the Morissette Park area. And the plan, the concept was to, was to raise the top of that wall by about two feet to allow grade to be correspondingly raised, prevent flooding, which it did a couple times recently, in recent years. And the, the, the concept for rate, for raising that wall was to, was to provide a reinforced concrete cap on the top of that, on the top of that sheet piling, after removing a steel cap. The top of that concrete cap would be at elevation two fifty-one, again, two feet taller than the top of the existing sheets. Let's see. During design, our primary concerns were the, were the lateral stability of that wall. We didn't have any record information about the design of that wall, and we're concerned that, that the resistance to overturning may not be adequate, may, would be a concern. We didn't, again, didn't have any knowledge of what, how the wall was designed. So we did some testing, non-instructive testing of the sheets to first and foremost, I guess, establish the, the depth of those sheets, which we needed in order to refine that design. And that testing was done in June, correct, I'm sorry, October twenty twenty-two. Allowed us to, to get that information. Didn't show any signs of significant corrosion or defects in the sheets. Based on the observations that we were able to take at that point, we didn't have any indications that there was significant corrosion. And again, our focus was on the lateral stability, so we designed a, a tieback system to hold that wall laterally and accommodate the loads of, of raising the grade and the concrete cap. Next slide. Unfortunately, what we've, what we've seen since the contractors started work and done some of the selected demolition that's needed in order to prepare for that concrete cap. Wooden timbers were removed from the face of the wall. There's two horizontal layers there and some vertical members as well that were removed. Water level is quite low right now, lower than we've seen it before. And there is signs of corrosion on the sheets that's significant, kind of below the, below the low water line. So it's a little bit difficult to see in these, certainly in these photos here, but it's significant, and it's pretty consistent along the face of that riverfront segment of the wall. My eyes aren't good enough to read from the screen. The bottom line is, I guess, that we've, we've concluded that, that the corrosion on those sheets is significant enough. It's rusted through in places that we're not comfortable proceeding with the original design concept to, to build this reinforced concrete cap on the top of it. And we think an alternate design is, is needed. So, let's see. Next, next slide, Kathy. So we've, I guess, after consulting with, with the city, we've spent some serious efforts looking at alternatives. What is the best alternative approach to accomplish the project objectives? And given that we've got a contractor on board, and we've got a schedule and a construction project ongoing, this, this work really is critical path work, meaning that it needs to get done before later work can, can be done. And without this work being done, that other work needs to, needs to be paused. So it's, it's important that we try to resolve this issue quickly. So we've evaluated a handful of alternatives. We identified six. We coordinated with the contractor because they have the capability to do this work. Fiacco has a, TJ Fiacco, the general contractor, has a subcontractor that, that is doing this kind of work on this project. We wanted to get their expertise and their input on the design approach that we were proposing and the alternatives that we were considering. So we've engaged with them and prepared a design, requested their cost proposal to do that work. We also are concerned about impacts to the permits, project permits. So we've been coordinating with the Corps of Engineers, the D C, and the Department of State, all of which have issued permits for the project. Let's see, and maybe first and foremost, we're looking for a cost-effective solution that's not gonna impact schedule, because schedule has an impact on costs moving forward. So we've got a cost proposal from the contractor that, that we think is a fair and reasonable one. We have pursued additional funding assistance. The city and Ramble have had discussions with funding agencies, with the ready agencies, looking for opportunities for additional funding. We have been unsuccessful to date, but there are some future possibilities that, that can be considered. We have requested approval from, from the permitting agencies to do an alternate design. And we've got, gotten approval from one of them formally, got informal approval from the other. And we've gotten no concerns expressed by the third agency, and we're trying to get that firmed up. So no issues expressed by the permitting.
Those are state agencies?
Two, 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 two states and one federal. Army Corps of Engineers is, is, is federal.
So what was the alternative that you picked?
So the alternative that, that we're recommending is illustrated in this drawing here, which is difficult to see, I realize, but fundamentally, we have an existing sheet pile wall that's got a tieback system behind it. And the, the recommended approach is to drive new sheets on the water side, directly adjacent to, but on the water side of the existing sheets. Drive them, drive them to the necessary depth along the face of the sheet pile wall. We would then cut off the top of the existing sheets and install a, a new tieback system. Connect to the top of the new sheets. And that, that element of, that element of the design is fundamentally the same as the original design.
And so the, this outside wall, this new outside wall, looks like it's roughly about six foot higher, five foot high?
That, that's showing the, that's showing the existing sheets in their cutoff, at their cutoff.
This is the cutoff. This is the existing sheet, right?
Yep, yep.
And so you're talking about putting this one right on the outside?
Yep, yep.
And so it looks like it's, I don't know, I'm thinking, like, it looks like it says, I don't know if it says six foot five or five foot high, but just roughly it's four or five foot higher than the existing sheets are there.
I, I. Once, once the existing sheets are cut down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the, so we, the options we want to have, first four required work within the water. For substantial concrete.
Right.
There are two options or two alternatives that can be constructed above in much easier apartment.
Absolutely.
All under the existing permits with some additional approvals. This option is sheets in front of the existing, the other option was sheets behind the existing. And that, that, that alternative was, was working out to be way too expensive, very complicated.
Hey, why, why would you? You'd have to almost, you're gonna come in the, you're gonna have to tear apart the tie system.
Exactly. You gotta deal with the instructions of the existing tie system. So you gotta phase it challenging to phase it that way.
The timbers, timbers any good? Are we reusing those?
No, no.
They're only like ten years old.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're in pretty bad shape though.
So the new sheet will attach to the old? Mine is cut off at a certain height?
It won't attach to it. It's gonna be directly behind it. It'll, it'll sit directly behind it essentially. But it's not gonna be attached to the existing sheet. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tied back above the cutoff elevation on the existing sheets.
Okay, because on, on your conditions and tolerance and stuff, you said, you know, sheet piles rusted through in places. Well, that's a very general term, you know. Are you talking like it looks like Swiss cheese? Or, and, and why wasn't there ever a diver put in the water? Because there was a thing in here for investigations and stuff in the early contract that you guys had. And it seems to me that you can't see something from above the water. You put a diver in the water, a lot cheaper than one point three, one point four million dollars as an add-on, which makes like, in October of twenty-two, finding out that it looks like Swiss cheese is not a good time. Especially when they've already tore up everything else and it's gone down there. Options are very limited as far as the people that sit up here. And I, I know about sign constraints and, and having people down there and, and costs, cost overrides. But what about the cost overrides to the taxpayer that's sitting out there that's gonna see this constantly? Because change order number one scares me to death, because when you get up to one point four million and change orders don't stop on, on these things. We're gonna see two, we're gonna see three. And at what point does a project that starts for the green belt of being, let's turn my page. Two point eight million for the, I mean, it was broken down through Morissette Park and the rest of each one of these, each one of these projects, the, the amount of monies that were being spent, and we're taking another, you know, one point four on it.
It's already three million dollars over the state funding and the required match, is it not?
It, do we get to go back and ask for, you know, our match to be less than, you know, or, I mean, and I understand it might be more funding available, but still, at what point does it stop?
I, I can address the question about funding. So they, Steve and Mike did allude to the fact that we did ask the state, we reviewed this change order with them and the implications that it has, to all of your points, Counselor Fisher. We inquired about whether there was additional funding that we could apply for, if there were ready projects that maybe didn't go forward, that we might be able to take advantage of that funding. The long and short of that is no. First of all, the projects they told us would have to be within the Augnsburg area, and all the projects that were awarded have gone forward. So there's no ready funding that hasn't been essentially encumbered in Augnsburg and St. Lawrence County. That would be the only opportunity to get additional ready funding is if a project didn't use all of its allocation in our specific location. The other options for funding are still out there, which is that we can just apply through the CFA process next year.
They won't fund anything that's already built.
But the problem with that is, that means essentially if that is the route that council chooses to take, we really have to hit the stop button on this project, because those grants would not, which I clearly articulated to this date that that didn't really, that wasn't what we were asking for, because that meant that our project wasn't gonna go forward, and our park is all torn up at this point in time. But yes, Counselor Reese, that would be exactly what would happen. We would really have to hit the pause button right now. And we would have to wait until July to apply. And then the, those funds would be announced this time next year, and the contract wouldn't be issued until twenty twenty-four. We had hoped that the state might have some greater flexibility for ready projects, since this was a priority of the state, and they were awarded in October of twenty nineteen. And so we have experienced, all ready communities have experienced cost overruns, because we're in a time that we just were not in, in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, when these were designed.
Well, again, they didn't put a diver in the water to know that the, the front of the docks was unusable and, and not safe. So, and that was back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, when this, this paper came out. And, and again, it was four point eight, I found it, four point four million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand was the grand award. And, and this, and ninety-five percent was four million, or six hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty. Our match was only two hundred and forty-three. Now we're up somewhere around two point four million, or, yeah. More than that. That cannot count. I'm only counting Morissette Park and city docks, because it broke down into three different categories, of being Maple City Trail, the Ostrogachi, and the St. Lawrence River, and then the Greenbelt Park. Each one of these is broken down in the packet that was given to us in twenty twenty. And it's just, I mean, where's it gonna end? We're gonna, we're gonna eventually surpass what they gave us for an award by far and still be, probably match it in order to finish the green belt with no park, no tennis courts, no pavilion, no nothing but grass. So I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not very happy with this project at all.
I think, I think the engineering was practically, it was over four hundred thousand dollars. Projects.
It's more than, it's a million.
Million one.
The engineering for this project is in the ballpark of five hundred thousand.
Yes. So, and when you're adding that much mass, the concrete, two feet of dirt onto that wall, I mean, it was, it's really irresponsible to not have investigated.
Well, one of the things that Steve noted is we did the ultrasonic testing on the, on the sheets and tested the entire, entire wall. on the sheets and tested the entire, entire wall. That indicated that there's no significant issues.
Issues above the wire?
Well, all the way down to the bottom of the sheet. The technology sends signals to the bottom of that so that we can estimate the depth of the sheet. We did not know the depth of the sheet. And that also, that test also identifies there's a major void problem in the sheet itself. And the test, the results were, did not indicate that we needed to take additional steps.
I mean, you, 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 you probably have calculations of the, the, the weight of the concrete to feed and everything. I mean, that's, that's huge under that, under a 100-year-old building, you know?
Yeah, what we, what we could see of the sheets, albeit above the waterline, you know, indicated that they, that the steel was sound and it's not unheard of from steel sheet piling to last in freshwater environments like, like this. Not seeing saltwater, you know, for, for 100 years. And, you know, where, where we would have expected to see corrosion, we thought was, you know, around the waterline and, and above it. The area, the, the zone of the wall that's subjected to water some of the time and, and is dry at other times. And we didn't see significant corrosion there. It's, it's really appears to be below the waterline. We've kind of speculate, speculated that it may be as a result of friction, you know, by ice, ice, you know, that formed in the water that moved up and down. We didn't anticipate it. And all indications that, based on observations that we had at the time, didn't.
There's just no way, there's just no way that, in my opinion, that we can add 1.3 million dollars. You're, you're basically talking about building a brand new city dock, which wasn't part of the plans. And it's already 3 million over budget on what the state gave us. So I'd like to suggest that we eliminate the, the sheet piling in front of the marina, which I never liked anyways. Go back to the state, ask for permission to do that, to amend the contract, and work with the contractor and get those numbers and come back to us. So it's in, it, so it's in favor of the taxpayers and we actually have a reduction and not an increase.
So we did that because that was, this change order initially came in even higher than what you see here. And the first thought was maybe we could do just as you proposed. We worked with the contract, excuse me, the contractor to get pricing. We even, we even looked to see if we could use the sheets that have already been purchased in lieu of purchasing new sheets in this area. We can't do that, but we, so we found out what the credit would be. We, we worked through all of that and we made that presentation to the state. And they denied that request and they said if we do not do that work because it was a specific project, which is laid out for you in the table you're, you've all referred to. That particular project, that's labeled on your sheet as having the total budget of 911,000. If that project isn't completed, we have to return that full sum of money. So based on the award and the materials that have already been purchased and the mobilization will actually be further behind if the, if the city chose that option. So we did explore it fully.
So I think we need to talk to our elected officials and convince the state that we just don't have the money for this. And we can't afford it and there's gotta, they have to have some flexibility. And, and, and the contractor has to be understanding too. I mean, that's, that's the way I look at it. I mean, when did all this start? I mean, we're just finding out tonight.
October 26th, 20th?
Just, just this past month, certainly.
We've been working this through all the avenues that we've just discussed this evening to bring it to you in the most cost-effective manner so that it has the least impacts on the project. It's a significant change order. It's something that we have been working very, very hard on with the engineers and the contractors, as well as the state for the last month to bring this to you. And it is, it is up to the, to the council to determine which direction we go. Certainly an option, as laid out in the presentation tonight, is not to move forward with a change order. Not moving forward with the change order does have significant implications for the overall project. So you do have to keep that in mind. We'll have to go back to the state and, and the contractor to see what that really looks like. Because we won't be able to complete the work as designed. Those are considered.
This wasn't part of the design either. I don't think we should be responsible for it, nor can we afford it given our budget situation, our, our bonding. I just think that, that we have to work with our elected officials to have them talk to the state and advocate in behalf of the community to find a much better solution than what's presented on the agenda tonight.
So council can do that. I just want to make sure that for, for the benefit of council, as well as the public, that should you choose not to go ahead with the change order, it will have implications on completing the project. We, we will, we may have to have aspects of the project redesigned and we, if, if it is the purview of council that you want to wait and apply for additional funding, that does essentially mean putting the project on hold. We'll have to work through that with the contractor.
This is an error.
It is not your fault. I just want to make sure you're aware of the ramifications.
It's not our error. It's not, you know, it's already 3 million over budget. Now there's another 1.3 being added to it. Can't afford it. They can do the change orders and stick us with 1.4 million easily. We want to do a change order and not pay it just to go some other way. And, and yet we have to jump through all the hoops, which is, which is almost insane. Maybe taking a chunk of the docks or a couple three spots and cutting them out, measuring the depth of that, depth, depth of them and having a diver in the water would have, we would have had this information to know back when, when the trigger was pulled on it. We can't put the bullet back in the gun.
I wonder, this is how the city government felt when they got involved with urban renewal. Saw how that went. To make a deal with the devil.
What contracts do we have that are outstanding? If we were to pause this going forward, we'd be looking at any potential legal troubles going forward with any contracted work that may come to a stop with our contractors?
City just has one contract with the general contractor. He's got several subcontractors engaged.
So we'd be looking at possible issues down the road for any contracted work that's not gonna be completed?
Potentially. Also, how, how soon, I mean, what's, what's the timeline on where they're gonna throw in the sheet pile? I mean, they gotta do it in the next six months, the next four months, when it's January, February out there?
Is this winter work?
This, this work is, this work is, as Steve stated, it is critical path and it is restricted by the DEC in terms of when the contractor is able to do the work. It's considered in-water work, which we also worked with these restrictions on the Maple City Trail. So any work that they do not have completed by March 15th of 2023 has to stop and then they cannot begin until after July 15th. So that there's a in-water restriction where the contractor is not able to work. So the schedule that we have awarded, all of that work would be completed before the March 15th deadline. This work would also be included in that.
To add to that, right, right now, the contractor would like to be installing the sheet piling on the municipal pier. We've asked him to hold on that while this issue gets resolved to give the city some flexibility. And he's doing that, but he would like to start the work on the municipal pier right now. And he'd like to order the materials needed to do this work at the city dock imminently. And I think he's got a month to get those materials in hand and then he'd like to be able to move from the, move from the pier to install the materials at the city dock.
So when I'm looking at the sheet, this, this financial sheet, I'm seeing the 1.3 million dollar change. And then at the bottom, I'm looking at a request for 880,000 ban. Does that have anything to do with that?
Well, this table that you were given was to accompany your ban resolution. It just helps. They're both kind of together. So the banning resolution, they are in your agenda to address the change order first. And then, so we would have all of your numbers correct. There has been an assumption that you would approve the change order so that you would have all of your banning information accurate for you. So this, this spreadsheet was designed to accompany your, that particular resolution and that 880,000 is what the city would need to ban to complete all the financing for both the Maple City Trail and the Dubisky-Morissette project with the change order that we're discussing now. Also, and Angela might be able to speak a little bit more to this either now or later in the evening. We did talk about what the implications are on the city's payments that would be associated with this change order. And while we don't have those exact numbers because it, it would all have to get finalized out with interest rates, it would be somewhere in between 100 and 150,000. It would, that's about what it would impact the overall payment on your, on your ban.
An increase of 150 a year?
I believe that's what we, or overall, I'm sorry.
Depending on the length of the bond, but right now, 3 million. You're looking at a fee migrating from 270 to 365 a year. So to add a million dollars to that, just to average it out, it's over 10 of the team, but again, interest rate.
I don't, I don't have an answer. I don't.
We'll have no park. We'll have no tennis courts. We'll have no playgrounds. Because the money was never there for the ready project, but those things back. And we also will have no pool. It's a sad situation, really.
Can we take those resolutions out and see, and give them direction? Can we take those out of order and vote on those so that they have direction? That'd be all right.
The ones we've already passed?
No, the two that we're talking about right now. Six and seven? Yeah.
Yes, if there's a consensus of counsel.
To not vote for it in the sense that, you know, it will happen to us. And, you know, it's a valuable part of our city. And having to cost more, you know, armor, like two pumps a week. So we took that all the wastewater treatment plant and we got a million dollar grant. The grade of the cost has gone, has gone up. So here we are, making probably a million dollar of our own money in addition to that. So I would probably go for it. Not happy, not happy at all with the situation.
We need, we need to make a conservative effort to.
Heavy lifting to do.
I think our, to vote against it and then have our elected officials go to work for it. That's what I think. Well, then let's just stick to taxpayers and, and do it.
I, I don't have any faith in our, and, and a lot of our state elected officials. I, I, I just wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't recommend that.
Morissette was really a power. Because you, you had a, a big steel framing. It could have just been built up on 18, 24 inches. Because all, all that flooded 17 and 19 was high water and high weight breaking over. I mean, the rest of parks never, never flooded. And, you know, and unlike the Crescent, which, you know, was a real flooding problem, real deterioration and looks beautiful. You know, the ready project didn't even have any, why the state wouldn't figure in, you're taking out a park and you're taking out tennis courts and other amenities. Why you wouldn't, you know, in, in your engineering, you're taking, you're taking out trees. You're taking out the road. You take out sidewalks, took all that back. Why wouldn't that ready project include those amenities to go back? I mean, it's, I mean, $7 million for two feet of dirt and concrete. You could have just built a round perimeter of that beginning.
Are you gonna vote for it? I don't understand.
Because, because I want, I want our city to have the park.
Well, we should pursue everything we can with our elected officials and see if we can either turn up muddy or, or reprogram it from the marina wall to the city dock wall.
I haven't seen anyone bring in any more.
Well, let them try. I just think.
I, just a quick question, Andrew, who, when, when Counselor Reese and you had already ran it by them to remove the pilings from, call it Little Park, I guess, call it Little Park and, and, and cut that out, which, what, what entity of the state said no?
So our funder for this project is DASNE. We're working with, with the Dorritory Authority as well as the Department of State. So each, this project, we sort of look at as one project, but it is three individual, right? Each, there are three ready awards for this Morissette Park project. That, and that's why on your spreadsheet, there are those three different numbers there that you see in addition to Maple City Trail. City receives four ready allocations. So we have to account, so if we don't do work in any one of those project areas, we would not receive the matching grant funds. But, so there's two, two things, Mary, I think. If you do want to amend your agenda to vote on these two items in advance, you just have to have a motion and a second to amend your agenda.
To pull them, you mean?
To vote on them earlier. They're the last items for action on your agenda. So, and then also I was just hoping that Mr. Manning, you could go through some of the benefits of the new sheet pile and some of the differences that that, some of the additional benefits that we have over, over what is there now, just so that's a little bit more clear for council.
So just a, you know, a clarification I'd like to make is the, the improvements on city dock are not only, thank you, Steve, for funding, thanks for, for flooding resiliency, but, but also the, the dock will be more robust and one of the, one of the intents of the ready programs to provide the ability to bring in, to continue to bring in the tall ships and larger boats, smaller cruise ships or ferry boats as, you know, as needed. So that's one of the reasons why that structure is designed to be so, so robust. So it's basically, you know, it's, we see it as a twofold requirement. The, the, the other point I'd like to make is that a lot of times when, when public infrastructure is designed, there's a, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50-year lifespan for that infrastructure. The existing sheet pile, we believe, has lasted at least 65 years, based on the intel we can find. The new sheet pile is made of 65 years of developments in technology and material as well as a coating on the outside. You know, we, we believe that that sheet pile will last 75 years or more. So you're getting a lot of, you're, you're getting a lot for your investment. I mean, we realize it's a lot of money for this investment, no doubt. But we're, you know, we're comfortable that that investment will last a very long time.
I have a question for you regarding the Maple City Trail on it. I don't want to get too far off.
Oh, sure.
And that project, I know when we initially discussed this with the engineer in Albany, we talked about how the water flows. It, it ramps into that wall. And we talked about putting some structure in front of that wall to kind of slow down the impact on that wall. Did that happen, whether it be a weir or some sort of rock structure that was put in to stop the impact? Because especially for the fact that concrete is not as good as stone.
I, I think there was an alternative that was considered, that's some of what you described. I can't remember what term you used. It was a term that I'm not familiar with. But, but I don't think we decided to proceed with that alternative. This wall is a, is a precast concrete wall. There, there is significant toe protection. Riprap stone, medium riprap stone, not quite as big as the stuff that you're concerned about at the Greenbelt boat launch. But there is significant, you know, stone that's, that's, that's packed against the bottom of the wall. It protects it from the underlying. That's protection from the underlying. But that's different what I do. I think it's just been, it's an approach that was considered.
Something in the middle of the river more.
Yeah, I think these are kind of.
Kind of diver or stop the ram against the wall.
I think it's the divide between electrical hydro plant and dam. You look at the boundary, goes sand towards the walls. Towards the water, towards the wall.
That's what I'm talking, I'm right.
Is that being looked at? Making a correction on that, put in in the eighties?
Yeah, no, that peninsula is staying. We're not, we're not removing that peninsula, if you will.
Just right at the end, you can see it, you know.
But that's what I mean when we first looked at the, the concept was stopping that impact on that wall. Maybe out in the river or diverting it or slowing it down a lot.
I thought it was kind of a series of kind of fins, fins.
Right.
That were sort of jutted out, kind of away from the wall, not for a particular wall, but kind of a downstream pattern. That that approach was not, was not used. We definitely had this toe protection that we felt was more than adequate.
Have you, have you looked at that divider? Have you looked at it to see if it doesn't need modification?
We have not looked at modifying that.
So have you looked at it and decided it doesn't need modification? Or have you not looked at?
We, we did talk to the DEC about that, the city did. And the DEC would not allow for, they would not permit modifications to that.
All right, that's what we talked about. Putting those fins in to divert the water.
That is what destroyed.
Yeah, no doubt.
All stay out with federal decisions.
Yeah, you know, we live with the mosque.
I want to.
I don't care about our doctor.
Rock solid, all right, more money.
Look the mosque itself. I think we should, in my opinion, we can get a consensus of this. I think we should leave those two items for last. And then the gentleman can see as we go through public hearings and things.
That's fine.
And facing the costs and they can learn to, let them understand what our city residents are facing. Very hard.
If we choose to go forward with this, do we need a driver or a diver, I mean? Are we going to need to consult or contract with a diver?
Not with the current approach. You know, if we wanted to pause and look at that more exhaustively, that would be, that would be something to consider certainly. Time to, you know, to do that work. But it's not, it's not needed as far as.
We do have a proclamation tonight. We have one public hearing tonight regarding the 2023 Public Hearing General Fund Budget. And I will open that to the public hearing now. If you want to attend in person, would like to come down, you have five minutes. That's all.
Good evening, I'm Michael Thule. I live in Augsburg and as a citizen, I thank city council for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. First, I ask council to support Bill 110 this evening pertaining to the status of the 2023 city budget. In my experience with developing or oversight of municipal budget, the standard is to slightly underestimate revenue. Changes made at the November sixteen workshop to the budget of revenue in the preliminary twenty-three city budget are not consistent with this standard. I do not think it is wise to budget revenue based on hope, which is what you did on November eighteen. The change I question most is the increase in sales tax revenue by two hundred thousand dollars. I note at least one council is quoted in the media that this change is a shot in the dark. I suggest that the council reconsider its decision and restore the sales tax revenue figure to the more conservative, more certain figure of two and a half million dollars. Councilor Reese suggests consideration of establishing a charitable gift reserve fund to generate more general fund revenue to the city. While I appreciate his search for such alternative revenue, I do not think this fund will provide the revenue we seek. My preliminary research into charitable gift reserve funds is that the money can only be used for charitable purposes, thus its name. I could not find a definition for a charitable purpose in the legislation establishing such municipal funds. But I think that spending these reserve funds for public services such as police, fire, DPW, central office administration, et cetera, would not be considered a charitable purpose. On the other hand, seeking contributions that would allow the city to provide support to agencies such as Augsburg Community Performances, the Remington Museum, possibly the library, agencies that might provide support for the homeless, et cetera. Such financial help might benefit the community while giving the donor a property tax break. And then one other note on this. All contributions to a charitable gift reserve fund must be unrestricted. So donations specific to a department or a charitable purpose is not permitted. But I suggest you seek legal advice to see if my research is accurate. And the expense side of the budget, and I'll qualify this by saying some of this now is contingent based on the discussions here earlier this evening. But I ask you to support the budget revisions to honor the staffing requests made by Chief Currents of the Police Department and Chief Stell for the Fire Department for the reasons they highlight in their respective presentations. I believe much of the public has expressed their view in the past three years. They disagree with the personnel cuts in these departments. They're willing to pay to see these positions restored. I also look forward to the DPW presentation with regards to the budget. Second, I believe efficiencies are created and better internal control established by maintaining four positions in the controller's office. A city controller and three support positions, one focusing on accounting, one on accounts payable, one on payroll. Three, I understand Angela Gray's rationale for maintaining certain expense codes at historic funding levels as placeholders. However, in this tight budget proposal, I refer to the question posed by Counselor Fisher at the last workshop when looking at a particular budget line sees an average spend of twenty thousand dollars the past three years and asked, why do we budget thirty thousand dollars? I think placeholder budget lines should be considered for reduction, not necessarily to their average spend, but to a lower level. So for example, for the expense I just mentioned, reduce the budget from thirty to twenty-five thousand. So a lesser amount of a placeholder. Four, I think city councils should seek more information about the infrastructure needs in the city pool before deciding not to fund it next year. Five, I support restoration of ten thousand dollars to the account funding celebrations. This funding dedicated to Augsburg Seaway Festival. And then an editorial observation. Audrey Smith has impressed me in the past three weeks in her work on 2023 city budget development. While I may not agree with every stance she has voiced to date, I appreciate her level of preparedness, her ability to answer most questions posed during the budget workshops. And to have that firm a grasp on all aspects of city services after three weeks to me is admirable. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Lynn Griffin and I'm here for the Augsburg Garden Club. In the light of the very serious issues you are all dealing with, I feel kind of insignificant. We did do a preliminary budget hoping to be funded by the city again. You have, over the years, been very supportive and very appreciative of the work we've done. And we recognize that. This year, of course, we are really not expecting anything. We will be doing our own budget revisions in light of that. But I did want you to know that we do count on the DPW, who's been wonderful to us for watering hanging baskets in the city. If we are to have them again, we absolutely need that help. And I know that personnel costs and positions are a question. But we also will be losing thousands of dollars that we've already invested in the hanging baskets and planters for next year. We aren't able to count on that particular thing. So I would just ask you to consider that as you continue with this budget considerations. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Penny Curfine. I'm the Director of the Library. Just a few brief things about the budget. I had some questions, which I will refer to Andrea and Angela after the fact. But I just wanted to clarify. We've been told. Yeah, we're working on our strategic plan, which is required by New York State for all libraries. The library has done its due diligence during these challenging times that the city has faced, that the country has faced. By being fiscally responsible and to keep the library open, we've had to reduce hours, programs and staff. We are hoping to bring those back. As far as staffing goes, in 2015, we had seven full-time employees and three part-time. As of right now, in 2022, I have two full-time and seven, or six part-time. And one of those full-time is me. And the other one is my children's librarian. So the question has come up as far as retirees' health insurance. There was a statement made at a previous council meeting that only two retirees were questioned about health insurance. That is incorrect. There are seven retirees that get health insurance through the city. And true, the contract was not signed by a city official, but it has gone on for thirty-plus years. So just some questions to keep in mind on the.
One second, Penny. I thought that contract was in December two thousand nineteen.
No, every insurance back to nineteen ninety-one. If you'd like to look at those contracts, they could be in the office or they're in my office. That statement is in there. And the letter from Mr. Felix Bromley, I believe, states that fact. So the questions are, there are some figures on page K five of the budget for state retirement, retirees' health insurance. And I'm assuming bond payment and interest. I just need clarification on those. To Andrea and Angela and whoever else could help. Do you have any questions for me? Okay.
I would like to see the library open a couple evenings.
We are open one evening. We're open Wednesdays till seven P M. We're open one evening till seven P M. We made sure of that. And with two full-time and seven part-time people who work less than twenty hours a week, I don't have the staff because I am not having less than two people in a sixteen thousand square foot building. So.
Would it be possible to do, to have supplement, you should have the volunteers?
I can't because of the circulation system and privacy issues. New York State and the library system says no. Because of the circulation system has addresses, phone numbers, emails. It's all a privacy issue at this point. So. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
I was wondering, do we know what the current fund balance is? Going back two minutes from the meeting on seven twenty-five, it was stated that the fund balance is around six million dollars. By the end of 2022, it'll be around two point eight million. Also stated that there would be an audit completed by late, mid to late August. Has that been completed? Or do we have an idea where the fund balance is going to be at the end of 2022? Anybody up here have any idea where it's going to be at?
The audit has not been completed.
Yeah, we were provided that. And it's also been made available to the public. There's a sheet on it, which has the fund balance through 2022 and projected through 2023. And it should have been provided to the public. When the audit, I have no idea. I just keep getting answers that it's being.
The last audit on the city's websites from 2020.
Yes.
So I'm curious. That's all. I might have missed that handle. I'm curious because it's something, obviously, with the ready project, with there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allotted in the 2023 budget from that fund balance. And it's also stated that we don't want to dip below two and a half million dollars. And so I was curious if anybody had any idea where we are going to be sitting at the end of 2022, heading into 2023.
Yeah, we've already discussed that.
Do you mind, can you share that to me?
I don't have the sheet tonight, but it was discussed at a previous meeting and it was provided to the public. And we're trying to take the.
I looked through all the minutes for the past six months. I didn't see anything in the city council meeting minutes without on it.
And we're trying to take the seven fifty and bond for that so that it remains in fund balance. Seven oh six, I think.
You can't bond for city, city government. They tried that a couple of years ago.
It's.
Yes.
Ready project, we're trying to bond. There was money.
No, I understand all that. Still doesn't give me an answer where we're at.
Could you get him a sheet of that, Fraser? Just show him.
I just said I'd be happy to get him.
Thank you.
I thought somebody might know the numbers off the top of their head, that's all.
Looking for the email right now. If I find it, I'll, I'll send it.
I want it right here and I'll be happy to send it to you and make sure that it's posted on the city's website. It was reviewed not at a council meeting, at the budget work session.
Got it. All right.
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Evans. I'm the president of CSCA Local Eighty Four Oh One, blue collar. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Blue Works has thirty-three employees. In 2022, we'll be cut to thirty-one employees in 2023. In the 2023 budget, there's twenty point five employees broken down to six point two in the water fund. Five point six for charge the sewer fund and eight point six eight employees. So between separate general fund duties. As of 2023, there will be six point five employees combined between the water and the wastewater plants. That includes recalibrating half a body for yearly filterer cleans from the DPW. They have no general fund allocations. I would like to make sure that the public and the council are aware that we are now maintaining with no extra staffing, all the recreation maintenance that was previously maintained by staff of six. Five employees have been completely cut besides one recreation coordinator. Over the last thirteen years, at the DPW, we've lost twelve and a half bodies through attrition. And recreation has lost five bodies. That's seventeen and a half people gone. And we're continuing to do the same duties. You guys, we just lost two bodies. You guys aren't really going to place them. We would ask if, they would discuss the services provided by the DPW. What's going to be eliminated? I mean, we, we just can't keep it up. I mean, we've lost seventeen and a half people and we haven't cut any services yet. But we're, we're coming to the point, what are we, what are we not going to do? We don't have the manpower. I just wanted to be known that we have lost a great number of employees. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, I'd like to recognize that you guys did take over all the parks and.
And we gained two people from them and now we just lost two. So we took the whole apartment over and we have no help for it.
The city looks so different, so good.
It's not going to look good. Have a good night.
Anyone remotely attending?
The first individual is registered as Greg McNamara and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Mr. McNamara?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I wasn't going to speak right now, but after hearing Jeremiah Evans talking about, you know, what, what services the DPW would cut, I, I have some ideas for you guys. Brush pickup. Now, a lot of people might be upset with this, but anyone that can afford to own a piece of property and pay taxes can figure out how to have their brush pickup done. We're using two ten-wheeler dump trucks, a forty thousand pound payloader that's made to work in a mine or a quarry somewhere. It'd be ran twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five for twenty-five years. These machines are animals that, that the municipalities get. Yet we're using them to pick up twigs on the side of the road. That's like, you know, me hopping in my Ford F-350 and driving to Walmart to pick up a pack of pencils or a roll of toilet paper. Yeah, you know, this is America. If I want to do it, that's cool. But the taxpayers aren't paying for that. The government ain't paying for it either. So why is the municipality doing that? If, if we really have to worry about where we're saving money, that's one thing that would save a lot. You got three employees just between the two trucks. And who's in the, you know, the loader? Then you got to think a lot of the times, there's somebody in the passenger seat of the trucks too. Because they do, they got to get out and help hold the shovels and stuff and make sure everything gets scraped up off the ground. One, one thing you could really think about to save money. Another thing, I've noticed towns and villages around our area, their, their codes department. They have one employee you call. If they're not in the office, it goes with their cell phone. There's an emergency number and then just a non-emergency message answering machine. We got three here in Augsburg. Some of these places I'm referring to are these big college towns right here in St. Lawrence County. They, the new buildings and stuff that's going on and going on every year and gone up in the past and in current times is, it tenfolds us. So that's another thing to think about. I'm all set. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
I declare this public hearing closed. And this time, anyone in this public personal appearance, anyone pretending, downholding? Anyone remotely?
The next individual is registered as Greg McNamara, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Hello. Good to talk to everyone again so soon. I'm just curious what the new city management thinks about the issues I've been calling in on for the past, I don't know, over a year as far as my rights being violated. I haven't heard from anyone. Once again, you guys want me to start filing civil complaints with the county on the people who work in City Hall and the law enforcement officers involved in this situation? I know that Steve Jelly's long gone. He won't be back. It was all so much. I have not been able to documentation that should have been provided before I was expelled from City Hall for a long period of time. Still no answer. Does anyone have anything to say about this? Or I talked, I talked to several of you. Right at the time. If he was on both sides of the spectrum, then I would and I won't. But what are you, what are you going to do about this? Do you want Mark Curtis to go down for it? What do you just want to have happen?
Is there anyone else?
For the.
Mr. McNamara, it appears you are self-muted. Are you there, sir?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm back.
You're done, sir?
Well, I don't know. I just, I just wish, you know, the mayor would say whether or not I'm going to have an answer in a day or two. Or does he want me to talk about more employees' names on here? Don't know, it's true. Especially when you were working under Steve Jelly and everyone had to do what they had to do or they'd have been fired from their jobs. No one has nothing to say there, up there? Does the constitutional rights of the citizens of this city not matter to any of you?
Let me move on, mayor. I do not see any other hands raised.
This brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Actually, we have our dissent agenda. The claim is enumerated in the German Fund Warren, number 21 dash 2022, about $549,000. $952.59. Library warrant, number 21 dash 2022, about zero dollars. Capital Fund warrant, number 21 dash 2022, amount of $5,055.50. Community Development Warrant, number 21 dash 2022, amount of $277.42. New Fund Warrant, number 21 dash 2022, the amount of zero dollars. As audited, be and same hereby our order paid. I shall move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Delaba?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reach?
Yes.
Councilor Scampely?
Yes.
Approved.
Do you have any questions tonight? Item for Council Action, our first item of business will be read by interim city manager.
Thank you, mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Claxton Hepburn Medical Center. Whereas the city and Claxton Hepburn Medical Center have mutually agreed to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the use of sites owned by the city of Augsburg in the event of an emergency incident occurs and Claxton Hepburn Medical Center must quickly relocate patients to an alternate site. And whereas the term of the memorandum of understanding will be January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2025, and will renew triannually. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is authorized to sign the attached memorandum of understanding outlining the duties and responsibilities of each party.
I'll move that.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Councilor Delaba?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reach?
Yes.
Councilor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city controller, Angel Bright.
This is a resolution introducing a local law providing for public notice and public hearing to offer a property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in General Municipal Law, Section 3C. Be it resolved that proposed local law of the year 2022 entitled Amendment to Authorize an Override of the Property Tax Cap for 2023, be it and hereby is introduced before the City Council of the City of Augsburg, New York, and be it further resolved that copies of the afforded said proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the City Council, and be it further resolved that the City Council hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the City Council chambers at 6:00 PM on December 12, 2022, and be it further resolved that the city clerk publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the City of Augsburg of said public hearing at least seven days prior there, too.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
I'm sorry. I'd like to change the date to December 6 and change the date of our.
Don't we have a meeting on December 5? Don't we normally do a meeting on December the first to?
No, that's fine because it relates to.
It relates to what he's saying. So we normally, when we have our December meeting, aren't they the first and second in December?
Yeah. So this, I believe, and Kathy, you can correct me. This is, we have to do a notification period for the public hearing and the 12th is the first that you, the earliest date that you can have it.
You have to give a two-week notification period?
Seven days, sir. But I can't get it published until Thursday. It would be published this Thursday, which is December 1st, and it has to run for, has to be seven days in advance of the meeting, which makes the first available regularly scheduled meeting on December 12th.
That's because it's in print on the 5th in our, in our official papers?
I'm sorry?
Is that because you can't get it in print until the, until the?
No, the first available date I can get it in print would be the first. So seven days after that would be the 8th. It has to be seven days prior to the public hearing date.
Is the Water Towne?
They, they all have the same dates.
Okay.
Thursday is the first available in any of the official city newspapers. Thursday, December 1st, is the first available date it could be published.
When we spoke about this particular item at the work sessions, you might recall that I encouraged you to call for the public hearing, which is all this resolution is for. Because this is the very last opportunity that you will have to make sure that it's on a regularly scheduled date and in, in that you have the public hearing in advance of the December 20th deadline that you have to adopt a budget by.
I recall.
Just for the benefit of all.
And if you don't.
We don't have this public hearing, then you don't have the op, the option of overriding the tax cap, which I, I know that councils made it clear that's the intent of the majority of councils to stay within the tax cap. But should it come down to the 19th or 20th and council want the option to go above and beyond that? If you haven't had the public hearing, you won't be able to pass the local law to allow yourself the option to do that. So the staff is recommending that you do this so that you have all of the options available to you as we go through the rest of the budget work sessions and conversations to get to an adopted budget. Just ensures that you have the most options available to you.
Do you recall the email I sent to you looking for information about the amount of the tax levy and real property tax revenue that we?
I do recall that email, counselor.
And is there an answer for that tonight?
Would you, if you'd like to bring that up under new or old business or items for discussion, Angela and I are prepared to respond to that.
Well, it's relevant to the public hearing.
I don't think it's relevant.
Not necessarily.
I think the public hearing is just a public hearing. And if you still want to vote no, then vote no.
No, but it is, the, the question was, are we below 2% or not? So it's relevant.
But it, it's, it's giving you the ability to.
It's just a public hearing. And to listen to the public. That's all it is. So what's the answer, Angela?
So I think in your calculations, Councilor Reach, you simply took the last year's levy amount and added 2% to it. There's two other growth factors that are factored in on the last year's levy amount as well as a carryover that's determined by New York State that's given to us to the tune of about, it's on page eight dash three of your budget, I believe, $79,000. So if you take your 2% add calculation, add in the two growth factors that are allowed and that $80,000, it'll bring you to the 177 approximately.
Perfect. So two for, what was, what's the revenue number? Two forty-seven something?
The amount that we can increase over last year?
No, the projected real property tax revenue.
I do not have my budget in front of me. I apologize. I wasn't.
It was the number you provided us.
That was, I don't have that sheet in front of me either. I sent that to you all in an email following that first revenue workshop. Overall, I think that all of the revenues amounted to an increase that, something like two, 205,000 overall increase, which included the.
So that number, that number you provided is below the 2%?
It's within the 2% tax cap.
It's within the 2%. Okay.
So the effective change of that to your point of your email is around 3.8%. So that's why we have a difference in calculation because the 80,000 approximate number was not included.
Great.
Okay.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Councilor Fisher?
No.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reach?
Yes.
Councilor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
No.
Councilor Delaba?
No.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager, Andrew Smith.
This is a resolution calling for a public hearing on local law to amend Chapter 177, Section 5 and 6 of the Augsburg Municipal Code.
I'll move that.
Entitled Sewer Rates.
Again, this will be December 12th at 6:00 PM.
That's correct, counselor.
And the sewer rates are proposed in your budget to be increased by?
This sewer rates were, have been unchanged from their initial proposal in October, and the increase is 25%.
And that's an increase in just for, for homeowners so they know of what dollar amount per year and from present to propose?
Sure. So it's an increase of $116.35 from the single-family residence. Annually, I can go through each of the meter sizes, tell you the increase or the current rate, if you like.
There aren't that many meter customers and that's not necessary. So it goes to $581.60 from the existing, I don't know what it is, but $116 more a year.
Correct.
We haven't come to a consensus on that.
No, it's a public hearing. It's a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing.
I'm with Dan. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reach?
Yes.
Councilor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Delaba?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
The resolution calling for a public hearing on a local law to amend Chapter 215, Sections 39, 40, and 41 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Water Rates.
I'll move that. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reach?
Yes.
Councilor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Delaba?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
And that is a 4% increase and it goes up to $402 a year?
Yes, that's correct. It's an increase of $27. This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Augsburg Public Library. Whereas the city and the Augsburg Public Library have identified certain areas requiring further clarification and attention regarding property called Library Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is authorized to sign the attached memorandum of understanding outlining the duties and responsibilities of each party.
I'll move that. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Councilor Reach?
Yes.
Councilor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Delaba?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Do you want the next one also?
This is, this is the planning, Andrea. So if you want me to go to the podium, I can do that. A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with TJ Fiaco LLC for the Ready Project 19302, Dubisky Center Morissette Park Project. Whereas the total project budget, including contingency, is $7,526,400. And whereas change order number one proposes a modification to install new sheet pile wall and tieback system to replace the existing wall and allow for the remaining improvements in Morissette Park to be constructed as designed. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is hereby authorized to execute change order number one. at a project cost increase of $1,365,991 to the existing contract between the City of Augdensberg and TJ Fiaco LLC for a total contract sum not to exceed $8,892,391.
I'll, I'll second it.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
No.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Angela Gray.
This is a resolution to authorize additional borrowings not to exceed $1 million to support the additional cash flow needs of the ready projects associated with the grant awarded in 2019.
Move it by summary state, statement for discussion. Okay. Can you summarize it?
Second it. So, when I'm looking at the sheets, so.
Sorry, did you, um, yes, a summary.
Um. I thought that's what you asked for. I didn't hear anybody speaking.
I wasn't sure. Did you want me to answer that? Sure. Uh, so you, this is the resolution for which your little colorful table should go to. It accounts for the change order that was just approved, and it takes into account the previous resolutions that the city has entered into for banning. And so, uh, the additional funding that is required is the $880,211. Staff is recommending that we do a borrowing not to exceed 1 million, just to make sure that we don't have to come back to for additional borrowing. That's a very high-level summary of the resolution.
Oh, a quick question. Uh, if the change order is 1.3 million, we're requesting an additional 880,000. I don't understand why the 500,000 or 400,000 difference.
So the city has already taken out, done some banning for, for this. Uh, we have done it in the amount of $3,603,876.
Correct.
So the obligation table there in the bottom right helps articulate where that 880,000 comes from.
Right. So on 11, on 11 of 20, November 20 of 20, we originally banned 415.
Which, just sorry, that, that number is the city's original.
Right.
Um, 5% match. So back in November of 2019 was when we first started taking action on what we believed to be what our match would be, and that's that number.
Right. Which is also included in the 21422 ban as well, correct?
No.
There's different bans for different projects, right? Because there's four projects in this one.
So on 214 of 22, we had a resolution where we banned $2,298,876. If you take out the 415, 480, 49 from that, you come up with 188327. And so I'm wondering if that, so that 415 is also included uh, in the, uh, February 14th ban.
Will you state those numbers again, please?
So if we look at the February 14th ban of $1,883,027, okay? Actually, on the resolution for that ban, it says $2,298,876. So it just so happens that the 415,849, which was the original ban, plus the $1,883,000, totals that February 14th ban that was in the February 14th resolution.
And I believe, without reading the resolution, that the 1.8 was the only amount authorized out of that. So the 2 points plus million would have been the aggregate total of borrowings on this project. I think that's what the, the resolution was trying to get at, that, yeah, if we had 1.8, we'd be at 2.2, let's say for easy math. But the only amount, it was my understanding, the only amount authorized under that resolution on 214 was the $1,883,000 and change.
Okay. When I looked at it, it indicated the 2 million, but, uh, and I was trying to decipher it, because I went back and looked at it.
Yeah.
The resolution, and I'm saying, where's the, the, the 415 showing up? And if it wasn't in there, you could tell that there was discussion, but I didn't have a chance to bring up the minutes, because I had all sorts of hand scratching going on. You know, coming right. Adrian's getting the witness mic.
So just to, just to walk through that, um, the November 2020 authorization, as Andrea stated, was for the original 5% match.
Right.
That ban's been in the works. We've been paying interest, et cetera. Then on 12/13/2021, in order to get the grant dispersment agreement, the city had to commit to banning yet again any cash difference. So that's where that one came in 2021. On 24/20, 214/2022, um, which I think will answer your original question, we had to, the council had to agree to additional borrowings based upon, if I'm not mistaken, an estimate on that job. So I'd have to go back to the worksheet that was presented that we gave to council saying, please authorize a borrowing of 1.8 million and compare it to the pricing where we're at now. But in walking through what we had as an estimate nine months ago versus what we know as actual cost plus change order, the math dictates that we would only need about $880,000 to borrow.
Came in low.
Yeah, I, I'd have to go back to that.
Which is basically my question, my question originally, I think, is.
I'm looking at it now in the minutes, and it, it's a, it's, it's not a significant amount of money.
Right. But.
Lower, I mean, lower than.
So it's.
It's a great deal of money.
I'm just wondering if, if it's a $1.3 million change order, why are we only requesting 880,000?
Because when we did the 1.8, it was based off an estimate, and the estimate versus actual, there is a variance there.
So it's about 300,000 or 400,000?
I would assume, without looking at it, yeah.
Is that what you're looking at, Mike? Okay. So somewhere in there with my math and looking up these.
And the resolutions are very difficult to read when we do these chunks of borrowing.
Right. I've been trying to really keep track of this right now.
I think this worksheet gives you the summary that you're looking for. In green, it shows you the costs submitted with the grants, um, what's been added in. We had an original 8.3 overall. We're at 12.385 as a grand total for the project with engineering cost. The city's expected currently to, based on these numbers, contribute 36% of that project, and the New York State would be paying 64% of that project. And the math to get to all that. Um, if you have any questions, Andrea or myself, I'm sure we'd be happy to answer, but.
I mean, there's a lot of details I. So 4.4, 4.5 million dollars in financing, you can go 15 years?
15, it can go 15, it can go 10, um, and those were the numbers I gave you earlier.
Most, the most you can go is 15. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, we may be able to, I'd have to check with our advisors on that. Um, we may be able to go to 20. I've only ever spoken with him about 10 or 15 year.
And the interest rate right now?
When I originally went through this with him, um, these numbers that I have were based upon, the shorter one, one was a 4%, and one was a 3.75. And that was, I think, just a couple of months ago.
Fixed. So probably higher now.
Probably. It would be over the terms of that bond, correct?
So you're estimating probably $450,000 a year for just the ready projects and loan and loan repayments?
That would be an estimate, correct?
So, I mean, do the math. I mean, it's, how many jobs for $450,000? So that's, you want to park, uh, with, you know?
So currently, your debt obligations, um.
I mean, it's a lot of money, and if you're looking at a tax rate increase, I think you're looking at 10%. I know you're chomping at the bit to raise taxes as much as you can, but, you know, it's, it's, it's 10% or, so. It's not like it's insignificant money.
So this number also does not include our discussion the other night to bond the 706,000 for the Maple City project to increase our revenue so that we don't have to take that out of fund balance?
Well, that was, that was. It was on the.
And, and why I'm thinking of that is, why wouldn't we put that in here too? So it's, I mean, everybody at council agrees.
We can, I believe, I can put it together for our budget work session we have on Wednesday, how that 706 flows through here.
But it is in here?
In a, in a roundabout way, yes. I know that's a very vague answer, but we had tran, planned on transferring that money to the gen, from the general to the capital to cover costs that currently weren't bonded for. So if we all of a sudden bond for the entire project, then the answer to your question is yes.
It's in here.
It wouldn't be an additional 706, so I can put it in a different format to show you that.
Okay. Just, just to give us a better understanding.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, and just to let you know, as you make this decision, uh, 2023 of a very small bond payment out of the general fund going away, which will be $42,000, and then in 2007, 27, 2028, and 2029, the remaining three large bonds would be paid out.
And we just inherited a 1, 1.1 million dollar annual payment on the sewer plan.
Out of the sewer fund, different, different.
Which, which also supports the general fund in tax rate, and it keeps sewer rates down. That's why sewer rates are going up 25% and taxes were proposed to go up 12%.
Kathy, would you please follow the wall?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
No.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Denied. I'm sorry, approved. I apologize.
And this brings us to old business. Does anyone have new business?
Can we, uh, for old business, can we get the updated, uh, sheet on, remember it was a June sheet on fund balance? And that was going to be updated? And I asked Angela, um, I was trying to find out about police and how much it costs to restore the four police. If you could give me that, I'd appreciate it. If you want a consensus, we can vote on it.
I don't think we, we need to vote on that. I mean, that, that's, I asked, I also asked Angela to, I, I think we're looking for options for the budget, and I asked her for, uh, what it would look like if we wanted to restore the police and add the four firemen. So she could probably give us all that. I mean, I mean, these are budget talks, so.
They are, and if there is a majority of council that want to see that work done, then Angela can do that, but she can't do that work at this point in time without a consensus of council, and there has not yet been one.
Okay. So I, I'd like to just piggyback off of yours and, and what would it look like to do both? So I just need it for, uh, police, and I can do it myself, so thanks.
All right.
Okay.
Guess we don't have four.
Why not all of it?
You can ask for it.
We're, we're looking to get a consensus here. If we're not on the same page, we're going to be all over the map.
I just approved a half million dollar bond. I don't, I don't know how you're going to fund all these things.
I'm just thinking it would be easier if we had it in front of us to look at for our decision-making.
Police and fire.
Well, no, in DPW. Consensus?
No, I, I'm going to do mine on my own.
I, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the work done, just to, just to see what, what a tax increase would look like or anything else and, and, uh, or, or how, how the budget actually looks, because we're having a budget discussion. That's all I'm asking for, is, is what does it look like if you kept the police and the fire? Boom. What are we going to do? And, and obviously, they're going to be segmented, so we could take one out or the other. Very simple. I, what's the sense of having a budget talk if you're not going to have a budget running?
Those were actually.
I mean, there are options.
Those were actually presented, weren't they?
Yes.
But we've changed a lot of things, so.
Oh, the fire chief gave you the numbers for the four police and fire.
Yeah, it's a big savings.
And, and then, and last year's budget are the four officers, so just do the math. I don't want, I don't want to trouble staff in any shape or form.
Okay. Yeah, that is, that is Chief Kern's presentation last year. So when we're sitting here deliberating a budget.
Well, ultimately, even 21 is not the perfect number for him, I'm sure. All that aside, I think that's what the one he came in with.
Right. But if we're sitting here deliberating a budget.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think, you know, you know.
Somebody said, I'd like to see four officers in it before we go vote on it. You want to have a number in front of you. What's it look like? I mean, that's all I'm asking for.
Man, um, if I, if I may, so at this point in time, my intent, before reducing your budget and submitting it to you, which we will do for the December 5th meeting, so you can make amendments to the adopted preliminary budget in keeping with the consensus of council, at this point in time, um, we've gone through the revenue. There was a consensus to amend the revenue, so we've done that. We will have completed, in theory, the work sessions, which I have on your agenda for later this evening. Uh, and then with the feedback we've gotten, uh, Angela and I will present a recommendation for meeting the objectives of council based on the revenue and the feedback we've gotten from all of the work sessions, and then you'll be able to amend it from there.
Perfect, perfect. Sounds good.
We're going to have another water and sewer work session, correct?
So jumping down to items for discussion, uh, I have proposed a work session on November 30th. That was, um, I, I indicated that in our previous work session for DPW. I'd like to do that at 6:00 PM, um, if that's okay with council. And I know that Counselor Kennedy said she wasn't available at the last work session. And then I'd like to have a work session on December 1st, which is the following Thursday, um, again, at 6:00 PM to discuss outstanding department matters. If the first doesn't work for council, uh, we could do it after the council meeting on December 5th. So your call on that, uh, and then I'm also recommending that on Wednesday, December 7th, you have, um, a work session for all outside agencies. You heard from several, several of them this evening. Um, most of them are not represented in the preliminary budget that, at this point in time, has been adopted, but I do think that they deserve the opportunity to come as all department heads and make their case for why they should be included in the budget or the impacts that staffing reductions in any department have on their operations. So I would propose doing that on December 7th. This is all in a goal to have, um, as much as possible completed for you uh, for your regular agenda of December 12th.
December 1st I couldn't make.
Yeah, let's do it the 5th.
Uh, I'd be remote, and I'll be out of the country. I don't know what my signal will be like, but I'll try and log in on the 1st.
Yeah, 1st not good for me.
The 1st is not good for several of you. We can do it the 5th, um, after council meeting, unless you all want to get together for an hour or so before the council meeting at 6:00.
I won't be available on the 5th. I'm good on the 5th. I don't expect to be in town the 1st.
So the 30th is good for everybody at 6:00 PM for DPW?
Yes.
Except I just.
Be remote, yes.
And the 5th following the council meeting, is that everybody's preference?
Yep.
Following time? And then December 7th for outside agencies at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
And on November 30th, I thought it was DPW Recreation and Water and Sewer.
DPW Water and Sewer, possibly Recreation if we get to it. If we don't, Recreation would be deferred to the 1st or the 5th, which looks like it'll be the 5th to conclude outstanding city matters. The focus of the 30th will be DPW, including Water and Sewer. But we did jump ahead and you skipped new business.
Sorry, we covered it.
Does anyone else have any discussion?
Sorry, I just have one other, one other item.
Number two.
At the last meeting, council inquired about, um, the Village of Hubelton and the rates for wastewater. So, um, I have been working with staff as well as the engineers that have been working on both the city's project and, um, the, the project for the village. So I can confirm that the city has not entered into a memorandum of agreement establishing the rates. That is what the city and the village will need to do to agree upon a rate. It appears that in 2018 and 2019, at the outset of the city's project, the village also commissioned a preliminary engineering report at that time to evaluate their alternatives, um, for managing their wastewater. Uh, the long and short of that study is, is that they found it to be more economical for them to, um, do the necessary upgrades to the city's wastewater treatment plant and transport their waste to the city rather than upgrading their facility and the long-term permits and costs associated with that. That report also indicates that the village would pay, uh, what's referred to as the cost to treat a k-gallon of waste, um, and that rate has not yet been established. But it would take into consideration costs associated with sewer administration, sewer maintenance, water pollution control, general insurance, unemployment insurance, and debt service, again, as it pertains to and relates specifically to the treatment of waste from Hubelton. And that range from engineers is anywhere from 42 cents a k-gallon to a hun, uh, $1.72 for 2023. And if you do look in your budget, your preliminary budget, um, J4 does have, um, an allocation of $31,390 coming in from Hubelton, keeping in mind that we will only be receiving their waste for a part of 2023. This is estimated, um, based on $1.72 a k-gallon. But that has not been set or agreed to by the city or the village, so there's still some work to be done there, um, as both of our projects come to completion.
And as previously mentioned a few times, um, a gallon of waste isn't necessarily a gallon of waste, because if you have a major industrial user in Hubelton that has a high biological oxygen demand, then it impacts and makes it more expensive for our plant to treat it. So that needs to be taken into consideration, and staff should be on top of that to make sure that either they're pre-treating it and, um, it taken, taken all that out of there, or, um, there's a whole list of fees in our code for, um, an industrial user, and that should apply, or there should be a recommendation how that applies.
I believe that all of that is being taken into consideration, and the rates that I just referred to are for residential users only, not significant industrial users like the cheese plant.
So we would need both.
Correct.
Yeah. And you based, I'm sorry, you based Hubelton off of $1.72?
In the 2023 budget.
In the budget. $31,000.
31.
390. Has anybody looked into whether Hubelton would belong to pay for a portion of the street that was, I remember we discussed that.
Maybe Shane can answer that.
Yes, we have, and they, uh, they have a contingency set aside for the half a street. They just did the patch paving for the year, and they're going to get back to us with a number after they're done with the patch paving to see what was left for the paving allocation. So they are on board, the engineers, and they were going back to the village to talk to them about half the streets.
Great, thank you. Thank you for asking.
It's not a done deal.
No, thanks for asking.
But they're confident that there would be funds left over to be able to afford to do that.
Okay. This brings us to citizens' participation. Anyone remotely intending?
I do not see any hands raised.
We do not have a need for a sensitive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.